Okay. We're going to open the Berlin Select Board meeting of July 18th. I will be presiding as the Vice Chair meeting due to Scott's remote participation. All votes of the board must be by roll call. Meetings of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice, image, and/or telephone number may be recorded. The board will not entertain questions or comments during this meeting, and it is recommended that attendees wear a mask. We have approval of the June 27th open session meeting minutes.
So moved.
And second?
Huh?
Scott seconded. Okay, then we'll take a vote.
Heath, aye?
Good aye.
Stone, aye?
Okay. I don't believe we have correspondence. General public comment or hearing appointments and presentations. We are going to have three Town Administrator candidates. One at six, one at seven, and one at eight. And we're working with our technical board.
No.
Nope, you're still here.
Scott, can you just talk a second?
Sure, I have no problem talking.
All right, no, we'll be fine. We appreciate it.
Okay.
Chris, are you ready?
Yes, I think we're ready for our first candidate. Now, Peg and Scott, do we want to go, you know, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, as far as taking turns asking questions?
I'd set an order, can you set that order for all three of the candidates?
What's that?
I would set an order that have it stay for all three of the candidates.
Chris, Peg, and Scott, your first candidate is Jennifer Warren Diment. She is a current licensed attorney in Massachusetts.
Nice to meet you, Chris.
She has a BS from Rensselaer Polytech in Environmental Sciences. Her skill sets are HR, labor relations, leadership, organizational management, supervision, written and verbal skills, policy and procedural development, social media expertise, grant writing, team building, expertise in housing and finance. Jennifer Warren Diment.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, nice to meet all of you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. And thank you to the search committee who has done so much to get us here at this point tonight. So, I don't know if you want me to just dive right in and tell you a little bit about my background, or...
Sure, do you want to start doing what that first, that'd be great.
Sure, so...
I take notes, so don't be offended if I'm like...
Oh, no, no, I take notes too.
Okay, all right, okay.
So, I have been working in various facets of government for much of my professional career. I've worked at the state level, first state representative. I've worked for the Worcester Housing Authority, which is the second largest housing authority in New England. And most recently, I've been in the town of Oxford for the past about three and a half years. I started as administrative assistant and quickly moved up the ranks to Assistant Town Manager. And I have had the benefit of working under a town manager who recognized in me that this was a career path for me and has mentored me, and it's sad that I am here this evening, but also happy for me at the same time. I grew up in Marlborough. I went to high school in Hudson, at Hudson Catholic, which is no longer, and currently live in Boyleston. So, I have been dancing around your borders for some time. And, you know, I am at the juncture in my career where I am looking to dive into the deep end and take the next steps to become a town administrator. And while I say that, I've also been extremely selective in the types of communities that I am looking at. There are a lot of job openings, and I'm not looking at all of them. I am looking at specific communities that appeal to me in their character and their qualities and where I think that I can make a difference. And I think that Berlin is just that community for me.
True, thank you. Okay. This is Scott, by the way.
Scott, can you see me okay?
Oh, we practiced before you got here. We had people sitting there and talking, so we're all good.
I have to look at that camera, because I think I'm, my picture is not where the camera is.
Okay.
So, I think what we'll do is, I'll start off. And then Scott, if you could ask the second question, and then Peg, could you ask the third?
You bet.
And then we'll just keep going around and around. So, is it Jen or Jennifer do you prefer?
Either, either.
Oh, you'll just answer it either.
Most staff call me JWD, so...
All right. So, with all of the open meeting law constraints and the need for transparency for the community and for elected officials, what would be your style when working with the Select Board members of Berlin? Particularly, say, for example, if you knew that two members did not agree on something?
Sure, so, you are absolutely right that the open meeting law kind of binds our hands. And the way that folks think we should be able to do business and kind of work out our disagreements behind closed doors is not the way it happens. The chair, because they are responsible for creating the agenda, generally needs to know what's going on, what's timely, so that they can make the decision of what to put on the agenda when. My view of my role as Town Administrator is to provide all members, however, with all of the information that they need to make the most informed decision on an equal playing field. And that disagreements that arise between board members are really something that I would hope that the elected officials would work out themselves. I'm not looking to get involved and mediate disputes unless both parties were certainly to ask for a sit-down just to talk about non-board business in a way that we could talk about that. But I have had the experience in Oxford where we've had a lot of open meeting law challenges. And so, I have become intimately familiar with the constraints of the old open meeting law and working through those issues.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
That actually is a nice follow-up, nice lead into what my question is. For you, what is the ideal role for Select Board members in supporting the town administrator and town employees?
So, every community is different, Scott, as you're aware. And in this town, the Select Board has a very active role and function in the town. You are not only the general policy directors of the community, and even though your Town Administrator is the Chief Administrative Officer, you play a large role in the actual day-to-day through the types of decisions and appointments that you still retain and make under your new Town Administrator Act. So, I think that the role of the Select Board is to listen to the residents, to the taxpayers, and to the employees. And sometimes, there needs to be a balancing there, they don't always align, and to balance. And my role is to give you the resources you need to be able to do your jobs.
Okay.
I have a tendency to be long-winded.
Okay.
So... There's heckling behind you. So, if you need me to repeat it, happy to do so.
Okay.
Ready? Sounds kind of up your alley, this was not planned. When there is a suspected open meeting law violation, discovered either by attending a meeting or watching a playback of a meeting, what is your process to address it, including, but not limited to, education, penalties for violations under the law, up to, in excluding, in including expulsion of the offender or offenders? And would there be any difference between a violation from an elected position or appointed?
Excellent question. So, in Oxford, knowing we had a lot of open meeting law violations, I organized a town-wide open meeting law workshop where we had, I know you also use KP Law, but they have a subject matter expert, Lauren Goldberg, who came in and presented on the open meeting law. Although the town clerk hands out documents, as I'm sure they do here, a lot of folks don't read them or don't understand in practice what that means. I think it's important to have that type of education, whether it's being done by an external party or myself. I find that most times when the open meeting law is violated, it's unintentional. Folks aren't out there trying to skirt the law in most cases. So, to your point, education is an important component of that. When a violation is noted, there are certain types of violations that the body can rectify at their next meeting. And so, if that were to be the case, I would advise that four of the steps that they should take to rectify the issue. In terms of penalties, monetary penalties would, of course, be assessed by, not us, but by the Attorney General's Office, should that come in. And from what I've heard, I think there's about two to three intentional findings a year. So, it's a very low bar. They understand that most of these things don't happen because people are trying to skirt the law. With an appointed board, you know, the appointed authority, in this case likely the Board of Selectmen, needs to understand what the issues are, perhaps have an executive session about it to discuss what the next steps should be. With an elected member, there's not much that you can do about an elected member who is violating the open meeting law. That really is between the residents and that elected individual. And so, that happens at the ballot box, or through recall, or if things go really off the rails. You can certainly counsel the elected member, and you have a code of conduct policy, which is fabulous to help kind of guide folks how they should act. But when it comes to an elected member violating a code of conduct policy, I think KP would tell you, there's not a lot of teeth in that. So, try to get folks back on track, cure violations when you can, and just educate and re-educate. There's changes to the open meeting law all the time. We just had word that there was an extension, and I don't want to go too on, but there was an extension that was added by a voice vote on the House Legislative Floor, and then it gets pulled out of the Senate side, so we didn't know which way we were going. So, education and re-education is necessary.
Thank you.
All right. So, just knowing how our previous Town Administrator managed to keep many balls in the air at the time, tell me about your organizational skills.
Sure, and before I say that, I've been told throughout this entire process that the shoes to fill are extremely large, and I recognize that, so...
Well, they're about this big.
So, I think that as administrators, we need to be involved kind of in everything that's going on all at the same time and be cognizant of all the different competing and various deadlines. What that means for us is that this is not a Monday through Friday, nine to five job, in reality. We are, we're working at home, we're working at nights, we're coming in for meetings. And you just have to keep a calendar, and it's nice because in the municipal world, a lot of our things run on an annual calendar anyways. So, you can anticipate what's coming up and get yourself ready for those things. Grants all kind of get announced at the same time every year for different grants. You know what your budget cycle is going to be. You know what you need to do to get ready for annual town meeting and the steps to back into that, where you need to be in January to be ready in May. So, you do have to keep it all going, you have to constantly be reassessing your priorities. Something could happen, and everything that was a priority today, every meeting that was scheduled suddenly is tabled because something major just happened. And you just have to be flexible and move with it and stay on top of yourself, and you have staff to assist, reminding you, and I'm going to move this to the top of your email box, and that's great, that's great, so...
Okay, thank you. Scott?
We didn't discuss our questions ahead of time, of course, not to violate open meeting law issues.
So, we're duplicating.
These questions just feed into mine quite nicely. So, what strategies do you employ to keep a healthy work-life balance when doing an all-consuming job like Town Administrator?
Well, I think conveniently, I live about seven minutes down the road. But, you know, I think that it is important that if you are going to have that long day, to take a break and go walk a trail. And to, if there's a phone call that can be had while you're doing that, great. You know, you do need to, at times, take breaks when appropriate and take a vacation, and you just need to time that knowing what the cycle of the...
Where is it?
And do that when it makes the most sense. I've found for me, taking a break after our annual town meeting is a good time. It's slow, it's not necessarily slow for the accountant. But you really need to do that. I have a great support system. My wife keeps me very grounded, my mom is in Hudson, you know, bounce over for dinner and bounce back for a nighttime meeting. All of that is important, and that's something that's important to pass on to the staff as well, so that there's not burnout for them.
Well, Jennifer, if you thought the first one was long...
All right, getting a new piece of paper.
Ready? And I'll go slowly for you. There are departments who conveniently forget to follow process and procedures. There are committees and commissions who will sidestep the process and go directly to a department to take action to assist them with an item without seeking approval or understanding the proper channels of communication. There are commissions and committees who have money in their budgets but take no action on items well within their purview to get fixed, but they fail to do anything. What are your specific plans to address these issues?
Well, written procedures are critical. And I know that the town has recently undergone getting some of that work done and has a roadmap for what policies and procedures financially need to get put in place and are in the process of doing so. Same thing with the personnel policies and procedures. I think with everything, we need to have checks and balances. So, by that, I mean that if you are going to have a committee or commission member who is often doing an end run and going to a department head and skirting the process, then the check for that is that that department head is empowered to kind of come and realign and say, you know, kind of rat them out, quite frankly, and say, you know, this needs to go through the Board of Selectmen, or this needs to go through the administrator, whoever it may be in that particular case. And a lot of times, staff feels pressure when there's folks that are coming to them. And to know that, no, this isn't about tattletaling, really. This is about making sure that we can help manage your projects and priorities for you. I think that if boards and commissions are not spending money, I'd want to know that they have under their jurisdiction. I'd want to know, are they aware of their pool that they have? Are they aware of the types of projects that they can, that they have the authority to independently go forth with? And if they're not, then let's talk about some kind of quarterly reporting system for them and educate them under the law what they're allowed to spend money on. With any small town, there's not a huge pool of money. So, it's important that, you know, if there's a revolving fund that can take care of something, perhaps in recreation, let's take care of that there outside of the capital process. So, with all of that, though, it's about me being available to talk and sit down with the various boards and committees and understand where they're coming from and what their needs are, and how can I help facilitate communications for them?
Okay.
You good?
Thanks. Next one's smaller, I promise.
Okay.
All right. Tell us why you're looking to move from your present job to Berlin as our next and be our next Town Administrator?
So, I have worked for about three and a half years officially, about coming on a year as the Assistant Town Manager. But for a long time prior to that, was empowered to kind of do the duties under that title, even though I didn't have it, which I am extremely grateful for. I feel at this time, it's right for me to kind of move forward and get into the driver's seat. And I think that I don't want to go into a huge town and have no support and, you know, kind of be up in this ivory castle making all the decisions. Being in a small town with a very involved Select Board who is, has a lot of authority is very appealing to me. I don't feel like I'm being let out of the gate with no kind of parameters or bounds. And so, that's really interesting to me. I think that what this community has done, seeing it from growing up to now, is incredible that you have been able to preserve your historic and rural and agricultural qualities while growing economic development on your outskirts. That's really, really exciting. Did I answer your question fully?
Yes, I think you touched on it before also.
Okay.
Scott?
Yep. Listen, I don't have much memorizing, trying to get on the screen in seconds. Okay, there we go. What ways have you used or seen used to increase the number and diversity of volunteers serving on committees and commissions?
Excellent question. So, I think that I have come to Oxford at a time when, prior to myself and the current Town Manager coming on, there wasn't a lot of multifaceted outreach to the community. So, one of the prime elements of my position now is to be the face of social media, the face of print media, and outreaching into the community. I think that a lot of times, you have volunteers who hold incredible institutional knowledge, who have been around volunteering on boards and committees for many, many years. And other folks aren't aware of what opportunities may exist for them to step up to the plate and help out. And so, just making folks aware when there is a vacancy, that, you know, there's a vacancy on this board, and this is the charge of the board, that is critical, so that people understand, even if they don't throw an application in, they might start watching a few meetings. So, that's important. I also think it's incredibly important for the Town Administrator to not be sitting in their office all the time, to get out to the community, meet the residents, not just the ones that volunteer, but meet everybody, and start to identify folks who have an interest. So, if you are going to a community event that involves sports, and they're talking about their kids and sports, well, is this somebody that we want to target for the Recreation Commission? Who speaks really well at town meeting on different issues? Is that somebody that, you know, maybe they have a finance background, and they will ask those really good questions? Should we invite them in and have a cup of coffee and talk about what the Finance Committee is all about, right? So, keeping the eyes and ears open to the community, but also advertising ourselves as well. I will be here, not just for business. You will see me around if I'm selected, so... And I think that people will get to know me and be excited and hopefully want to come in and be part of the team.
Okay.
Short one, all right.
There's an ever-growing to-do list for the Town Administrator, along with ever-growing requests for procurements, unforeseen items, emails, late-night meetings. You've already talked about how you prioritize your work. This is the question. When do you just say no?
So, I think you, you don't want to shut people down and just say no to say no. I think it's important to say, maybe not right now, and here's why. So, obviously, if it's something that is not a function that the town can undertake, you know, this is against state law or state regulation, then the answer is no, and here's why. But if it's something that, that's a really great idea, but it's going to require $1.5 million, it's no right now.
I'm looking to capital planning.
It's no right now, but how can we maybe, what do you think about breaking this apart for me? What are small little bites that we can take? And what are some ways that we can cobble some resources together to get $1.5 million? I know I picked a big number. So, I think, but you don't want to just say no, you don't want to just turn people off, because continuing to throw our ideas against the wall to see what sticks, that's how we get the best product. And by collaborating and, you know, sometimes when you're talking through an idea, your idea is terrible, and you didn't know it until you talked about it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Not the "your idea is terrible" part, but the...
Do you have anything else you would like to tell us about yourself that you may not have already covered, or questions?
Sure, so, I think that you should know about me that I am going to be a team player. I am going to be part of the team. There is not something that is too big or too small for me. So, if that means, you know, when we had, when we were in the height of COVID and we were figuring out how to do the annual town elections, I was there with the painter's tape, with the town clerk, marking out on the floor how we were going to do that, physically set up for town meeting in a gymnasium with not much help for a full day.
With the six feet?
With the six feet.
Yes.
And that was me out there doing that. At the same time, if there's a huge project that I'm not familiar with, and it's very technical and complex, I'll know that I don't necessarily know how to do it right now, but I know what steps, resources, and tools there are available to me. So, there's nothing that is too big or too small. I think that I've had some great experiences in Oxford, and I'm really ready to take the next step. And I want to be in a community like Berlin. I want to be in a place that has similar values to me. And in researching Berlin, Berlin does have very similar values. And I think that that's really important. I like to communicate with folks where they are and meet people where they are. And I think that that resonates well with not only residents, but staff alike. And I know that there's some significant shoes to fill. And you are very fortunate that you have had such a wonderful first Town Administrator and that she is willing to answer the phone going forward, that's incredible. And so, I look forward to meeting her and working with her. I do know the board may be aware that I am in another search. And so, I wanted to be open with the board about that. There is an interview tomorrow night. But without saying too much, this is a community that I feel very strongly about.
Okay, and do you have any questions for us?
I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked the search committee.
Okay.
You can all suffer equally. So, if, in a year from now, what measures of success would the Town Administrator have? Or what benchmarks would they meet to know that you made the right choice tonight?
You want to start, Peg?
Yeah, here comes the boss, ba-dum-bum. I got it. All right.
Scott?
No, no, I got it. I, I reserve the right to come back. The first one, I think, Jennifer, would be our finances and our budget. You know, for the past couple of years, we've had small incremental increases of about two and a half percent. And where there isn't a lot of commercial development in town, the taxpayer seems to shift the burden a little bit more. And there aren't a lot of services. You know, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, we don't have, you know, public trash pickup. If you want that, you got to pay for that and pay for a dump sticker at the same time. So, you know, people are well aware of finance. One of the other measures of success is that I've seen disparity in pay within our folks that are in town. And you have some who are at or well above where they should be, and you have some that are below where they should be. Obviously, we want to retain and hire those people. And many of those people, as you had talked about, come with years of knowledge. And as soon as they walk out the door, there goes 10, 20, 30 years that you could pay them a bazillion dollars, they're never going to get that back. So retention of employees, balance of pay employees, and I would say for a third, looking at the departments and who needs help. You know, is there a department or departments who are always saying, me, 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 and they get 90 cents of the dollar? And some other department who doesn't say anything but is truly like a backbone of the town doesn't get as much as they should for that. So definite finance, taxes, pay, and help in the various departments.
Excellent. So I, I would, I would agree with the budget, although the budget is a moving target. And there are things that will come up after you've got the budget all set and then you have to re-figure it out. And I guess, and, and the employees, if, if they are happy with what they're doing, happy with their jobs, and that's, that's pretty basic. But, and you know, just a little heads up that, you know, this board has done goals for Margaret when, when she was here. How many did we have, Peg?
Well, we had a lot.
We had a lot.
Multiple, we, a multi, truly multiple pages.
Yes. And so I think between all of us, I think we need to maybe figure out what's most important.
We carved it down because I think in the beginning it was...
It had to be 30.
There were quite a few. And then we met within the year. And I want to say we probably carved it down to about 10 of them.
10, 10 that were most important that we agreed on, right?
Right. And then obviously as one falls off, 11 comes up, two falls off, 12 comes up. So, you know, that list of 10 is revolving.
But we need to work on the process, I think. Okay. You know, I don't want to overwhelm candidates, you know, before they're even here. So. Um, Scott?
Yes. For me, some of the measures is, I think one of the three factors of COVID is that, that we don't know what the world's going to look like a year from now and some of this sort of objective stuff, although I agree with what both of the other, like our members said. I think for me, the, the evaluations are more like the, I want to call it the temperature of the town. You know, is there faith that this, that we're still going the right direction as of now, are the employees generally still satisfied and having, feel like they're being supported and have direction? And, and just how we have adapted and flexible to things that have come at us. There, you know, there, there are things that we, that we, we don't even know should be on the list because, you know, we've not thought about it a while or some, you know, again, a pandemic shows up and all your meetings suddenly have to change. You have to change the way we move people around the building. The structure of town office is different now, but what it's not going to go back in some respects. And so it's that sort of, you know, that, that's the sort of things that I'm looking forward to die with if you have the right kind of answer.
Excellent. Excellent. Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think I have any other questions for you. I think that you, you've all answered my questions. I think that, you know, hearing, hearing that answer from the Search Committee and hearing that same answer from the Select Board, it really shows how there's, there's so many different voices and so many different needs and that it's, it's the role of your next town administrator to kind of manage all of that. And I know that your outgoing town administrator has done an incredible job, but also still has a lot of irons in the fire that are really important. There's a lot of, I, I believe you have a feasibility, oh, not a facility study coming out, and there's a lot of studies that have been done. And it's important that those don't just kind of go up on a shelf somewhere and collect dust. The taxpayers have paid good money for those services. And so I think that I'm excited and, and I really have loved everybody that I have met so far and, and really would look forward to working here with the employees, the volunteers, and the, the board as well. So I thank you all for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Scare her away? No.
You can ask me more questions if you want.
No, I said you guys scare her away. Thank you, Jennifer.
I can't ask you more questions than I have to ask everybody.
This is true. Thank you.
It's true. All right, thank you.
Have a great night. Who's next?
Do we have a couple of things on our agenda? We have a...
We do. Hang on, let me get to my next person that we're interviewing. Okay. And find my papers.
Nope. We have Tim Wheeler's thing that we can deal with.
Yeah, where's my agenda?
Yeah, the appointment for CPA admin.
Here it is.
Maureen, I think.
Yes, we have a, a conditional appointment of the Community Preservation Assistant, Maureen Adema, that we could take a vote on. Do I hear a motion? Okay, do I hear a second?
Sure do.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
She's gone through personnel? Have you looked at the PAF? CPA?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. All right.
Sorry, she's thinking.
I know.
It was really busy week last night.
I know it was.
I'm sorry.
I know. I just wanted to make sure. So we're the last stop on the, on the hiring bus.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so then we'll take a vote. Keef Eye.
Hawkins Eye.
Stone Eye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
I think the other one was postponed anyway, right?
Till next week.
Yes.
Yep.
And that was it.
Do we do, any updates or?
Um...
I don't have any.
I... Did you have any board updates or anything, Scott? Probably not, huh?
No. You know, I was, I was free for two days between getting back from my vacation and coming down sick and I've been here since. And sadly, I'll miss, I have to start tomorrow, Wednesday night maybe, not tomorrow. I, I still have a couple more days, but I'm not really going to be in the public.
Yeah. How mu, how, how long? How many days?
Um, it depends on who's counting once. And so it's either going to be Tuesday evening or Wednesday evening. It probably will not matter much.
Okay. Did you have any updates, Peg?
No. I don't think that Energy is meeting. I know that we appointed Tim Wysocki, so I was going to last week. So I'm going to send a note around, see when they can get busy on that. Rec hasn't met. Haven't heard back from Margaret on Earthworks in regard to the, oh, what was the other town doing that she talked about where they had it as a, a regulation, mid-at-borough, Board of Health regulation to prohibit contaminated soil without going to the Attorney General for approval, so waiting. You wouldn't have any update, would you, TA2?
I don't, but I couldn't look and see.
Okay. So that was Earthworks. And Conservation is meeting on Wednesday. I know that there's some issues with stuff going up on Highland, the over 55 development, so I'll wait to see what happens with that.
Okay.
Do we want to delay? Do we want to go on a 20-minute break, 15-minute break until our next candidate? Or is she here?
Do you want to take a break, Scott?
Yes.
All right. Okay. We'll just leave this thing on and you go do what you need to do.
We'll be back.
It is Kristen Rubin. She's currently the Assistant Town Administrator in Lester, Massachusetts. She has an MPA and a BA from Middlebury College up in Vermont, I believe that is.
Yes, it is.
Her skill sets, finance, IT, grant writing, HR, housing, public speaking, and she is MCPPO certified. Kristen Rubin.
Hi, very nice to meet you all. I wasn't sure if I should walk over, wait for my introduction.
Peg, nice to meet you.
Hi, very nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Hi. Nice to meet you over in the corner, Scott. Nice to see you again. Thank you for having me.
All right.
All right. So I don't know if you would like to start off by just sharing a little bit of your background?
Certainly. Well, first, I'd like to thank everyone for having me here this evening. It's a pleasure to be back here again as I was here last week. And I was extremely excited to get the call to come back. My name is Kristen Rubin. I have 15 years in government and my entire career has been in a variety of customer service experience positions from when I worked at Fileen's at the age of 16 going forward. Retail teaches you everything. I always say if you can handle retail, you can handle it all and waiting tables. Everyone should have to wait tables. So I got into local government after I got my MPA and I was actually going overseas to do international development. And someone said to me, have you looked at local government? There's a lot you can do here at home in your own backyard. I said, yeah, but I want to, you know, save the children. And they said, you should take a little more look at what's going on here. So I started working for a redevelopment agency in Monterey, California, where I did affordable housing and community development. And this was in the Salinas Valley. If you're familiar with John Steinbeck, the haves and have-nots, this is the Grapes of Wrath. We had farmlands where you had immigrant laborers who were living in sheds, had no housing, no streets, no sidewalks, no drainage, no public utilities. And we were literally building communities in unincorporated areas around the fields. I fell in love. I moved back to Massachusetts. I am from this area originally. Worked for the City of Worcester in economic development, doing brownfields remediation and homelessness transitional housing programs, mostly grant management for a number of years. And I said, you know, I'm, I'm a bit tired of grant management. I like it, but I'd like to do something different. And I am originally from Lester, Massachusetts. The position to work in the town administrator's office opened and I said, wouldn't that be wild to go back to my hometown? And I applied, got the position. I have been there for eight years. I have been the Assistant Town Administrator in title since 2020, but I've been doing the work de facto since I started in 2014, as there was not an ATA position initially. I have a strong background in grant writing, public speaking. I have a real passion for local government. It wasn't, as I mentioned, my original career path, but I fell in love with it. I have an excellent background in human resources, finances, as well as procurement. I've done a tremendous amount with my MCPPO certification since I got it three years ago. I actually just renewed it. On a personal note, I'm recently married. I live in Leominster and I am now a mom to a nine-year-old stepson who is amazing. And I live with my husband and our three dogs, our little blended family. And I'm really looking for a new home. I've been looking for a bit. It has to be the right fit for me because I went from a county to a city to a small town. I realized a small town is where my heart is and where I belong. And I really looked at Berlin a lot and I feel that this is the right fit for me, my next home. I'm really excited about all of the initiatives that are going on here, especially some of the progressive initiatives like the affordable housing. I was like blown away that you have over 16% affordable housing. My initial career step got me excited about that. And your Green Communities designation 10 years ago, far before most other communities had it. And I have a lot of experience in project management as well. And it looks like this community is very progressive and wanting to move forward with different types of initiatives, particularly those that are state-funded that fit well with the nature of the community. And you're kind of at a precipice of balancing rural versus your tax base that you're bringing in from your 495 corridor. And how do you balance all of those needs? So I feel that I have the experience to help lead this community in the next direction. And so I'm here.
Terrific. And thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
So I will start with the first question. With all of the open meeting law constraints and the need for transparency for the community, for elected, community and for elected officials, what would be your style when working with the Select Board members of Berlin? Say, for example, when perhaps one or two of us disagree on something?
Okay. So I am a big proponent of having all discussions be in open session. I recognize that individual Select Board members will come to me with concerns. And I think the best thing to do is to present those concerns in an open public meeting where the Select Board members can hash it out amongst themselves, try to build consensus. I think what I would do, particularly if, you know, you came to me with a concern and another board member had a conflicting view, I would do a lot of research on both sides and try to get the facts down and be able to present information and perhaps a factual-based recommendation. But ultimately, I recognize it is the decision of the board to move forward. My job is really just to give the board that information in an open and transparent fashion so that they can make the best decision possible. Not everybody agrees. I recognize that. We have a five-member board in Lester, so sometimes that's a lot of disagreement. You know, I, I really value when someone comes to me and says, hey, I know this item is coming up on the agenda. I'm not really sure how I feel about it. Can you look into this or get some more information on that? And, and I'm happy to do so. I believe that communication between the town administrator's office and the Select Board is really important. Nobody likes to be blindsided in a meeting. And I think that it's just really crucial to, to bring forth any concerns residents have, any concerns boards or committees have, because you want to make sure that everybody is represented. When you talk about kind of openness and transparency, we do a lot in Lester with electronic media in trying to get information out that way. And I'm responsible for all of that, from the website to Facebook to sending out news and announcements. And I think it's a great way, especially when there's a controversial issue kind of brewing in the community, to put out facts. And that can be a really helpful way to just get information out there. You're not arguing with people, you're just saying, hey, look, this is the situation. This is kind of what we're doing to deal with it. Come to our meeting on Monday night and let us hear your thoughts. So that's kind of a way I would deal with dissenting views from different parties.
Okay. Thank you. Sure. Scott?
It leaves a little bit in place that for, for you, what do you feel the sort of ideal role is for Select Board members in supporting the town administrator and working with town employees?
So I believe that the Select Board members, you are the CEOs of the community. You delegate the day-to-day to the town administrator. You set the policy, you set the direction, you set the goals. And the goal of the town administrator is to help carry out that vision. So it's really working hand in hand to make... So, it's really working hand-in-hand to make sure that the board's vision, which is obviously reflective of the community's vision, is carried out in the work that the department heads do, in the work of every employee throughout the town. So, I think it's very important that there be constant communication. And, um, as I said in my last interview, a lot of listening. One of the first things I would do, um, in coming in is really sitting down with volunteers, Select Board members, department heads, boards and committee members, and trying to understand what the concerns are, what the needs are, the strengths, the weaknesses, um, budgetary constraints, outside-of-the-box thinking that can be done on anything, because I recognize that there are constraints. I mean, there's a lot of asks and there's only a limited amount of resources. And I take a more fiscally conservative approach. You wanna make sure you have your reserves and your stabilization and your OPEB funded. So, um, I think that it's just really important all around to have those open lines of communication. And to make sure if somebody isn't happy with something, you really listen and you really try to understand why they're not happy. Not just pay someone lip service and say, "Oh, yeah, that resident's mad today," you know? "I'll just listen to him, they'll be gone tomorrow." That's not what it is. If you're in a town and you're in a community, public service is about serving. You should be there for people, you should want to help people. And the board members, you're the eyes and ears out in the community. You hear it, you bring it to us, and we work together to try to make the community the best that it can be. Thank you.
Okay. I'm a note taker, sorry.
I am a total note taker, so I understand that. If I wasn't speaking, I'd be just jotting everything down.
All right, you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. When there is a suspected open meeting law violation, discovered either by attending a meeting or watching a playback of a meeting, what is your process to address it, including but not limited to education, penalties for violations under the law, up to and including expulsion of the offender or offenders? And what would, uh, and would there be any difference between a violation from an elected position or an appointed position?
That is a great question. Um, so, we recently, uh, received an open meeting law, well, not recently, a couple of years back had an open meeting law violation. We had an emergency meeting for a cannabis facility that opened in town and caused a tremendous amount of traffic backed up on Route Nine. People, you may have heard of it, um, it's a facility called Cultivate. It became national news, you know? People said people are throwing trash in people's yards and going to the bathroom in people's yards. And it was, it was a little wildly blown out of proportion. Um, one of the first things we did was talk to legal counsel, which we had done before the meeting, to make sure that we had the grounds to hold that meeting. But if this was discovered afterwards, I would certainly reach out to legal counsel, get an opinion as to whether or not this is a true open meeting law violation. Can always work with the State Ethics Commission too. And I would definitely wanna sit down with that board member or department head, whether appointed, elected, have a conversation about their understanding. A lot of times it can be an innocent mistake. I, I don't think people set out to violate open meeting law intentionally. Um, but sometimes people get carried away and excited about what they're talking about and they can stray a little bit from the agenda. Um, or sometimes people are at an event and they get talking and all of a sudden you realize you have a quorum of a board talking at an event. Uh, I see maybe I'm hitting on a topic there. Um, so, you know, I, I think it's, education is really important, going through perhaps the conflict of interest training again. Um, and I think, you know, really, the way that we've dealt with it with State Ethics is anytime we have a concern of any, you know, nature, we really recommend that the individual contact the State Ethics Board for that guidance because the town is not necessarily in the position of making State Ethics determinations. We would like to stop them before they happen. But if somebody has a specific concern, we like to have them reach out and get, you know, some guidance on that as well. Um, elected versus appointed, to me, that's a tough one because obviously I wouldn't have specific jurisdiction over an elected official. Um, you know, I would recommend they go back to whether it's, um, an elected board, if it's, you know, a Board of Health member, to the Board of Health and speak with their board about it or what have you. Um, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we all need to work together to make sure that those don't happen going forward. And I think it's worth sitting down and having the conversation, even if the Town Administrator can help facilitate that type of discussion. Um, but, uh, you know, ultimately, the town needs to try to stay out of any limelight when it comes to open meeting law violations, so we wanna avoid that as much as possible.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Um, so, our previous Town Administrator kept so many balls in the air. And so I'm asking you about your organizational skills.
I would say they are top-notch and they have to be because I started out as the assistant to, to the Town Administrator. That position requires exceptional organizational skills and it requires an understanding of the office from the bottom up. Um, I came into this position with switching careers and I thought, "Oh, assistant to the Town Administrator, that sounds like maybe it'll be a little easier than my last job." It has been the most challenging job that I have ever held to date because you are juggling nineteen things at once, the phone is ringing, people are walking in, emails are coming in, you're doing projects. A board member needs something, the Town Administrator needs something, a department head needs something. Keeping exceptional notes, I have a drawer full of journals that I have kept for the last eight years, um, which, you know, hopefully the town will never be in a lawsuit, but if they need to, it's all there. Um, and sticky notes and lists and prioritizing is critical. You cannot be in this role if you can't multitask or prioritize. Your organizational skills have to be on point. You also have to know when to rely on other people. Um, the Town Administrator is not an expert in all areas, the department heads are. And when there's an issue that arises, you can't try to carry all that weight yourself. You have to reach out and say, "Hey, Fire Chief," or "Building Inspector," or what have you. You know, "What's going on with this situation? And please let me know what you think." Because I'm not equipped to answer all of those questions. Ultimately, you know, the decision would rest based on a mutual agreement and I recognize that responsibility falls on me. But, um, I don't believe in making decisions unilaterally. I believe it should be a collaborative approach. Um, and I just think, um, you know, it's a, i- it's critically important, um, to keep that level of organization and those lines of communication open.
Thank you.
Sure.
And so, in addition to all the balls in the air for Town Government, what strategies do you employ to keep it a healthy, uh, work-life balance while doing an all-consuming job like a Town Administrator?
That is a great question. Um, I do actually have, um, a wonderfully supportive husband and family, um, very family-oriented person. I spend my weekends, we actually have family lunches on Sundays. We all get together, which is really wonderful. Uh, my aunt lives on a lake in Spencer and we all hang out. Um, I have my stepson twice a month and I do focus on spending a lot of time with him. I like to take my husband and my stepson out to different events in Lester when they happen. Um, I spend a lot of time walking my dogs and kind of clearing my head. And that's sort of a great way to, uh, have that work-life balance too. But mostly, you need to be able to put in the time and the hours that it takes to get the job done, but you need to also take care of yourself as well. And sometimes there are points where decisions will have to be made, where there are competing priorities that are happening at the same time. And I think that's the time when you bring it back to the Select Board and you say, "Listen, there's nine things that are due this month. I don't reasonably see that we can do all of them. Let's make a list, let's figure out what's most important, what can wait, you know, how does this fit with your goals and your priorities?" And I think it's really the responsibility of the Town Administrator to say, "Hey, we need to pump the brakes" and actually bring that information forward and bring it to the attention of the board and let them know that there's too many things going on at the same time. Because doing many things poorly is certainly not the way to get things done. And, you know, burning yourself and your employees out is not an effective way of getting things done either. Um, I think employing morale is really important as well. I think, you know, being able to get people together, whether it be around the holidays or birthdays or what have you. Um, I love little parties, it's kind of fun for me, um, you know? It's just nice to get people together. And I think that, um, that helps to show your, um, employees that you care and it's not just all about work, it's more of a family environment too.
There are departments who conveniently forget to follow process and procedures. There are committees and commissions who will sidestep the process and go directly to a department to take action to assist them with an item without seeking approval or understanding the proper channels of communication. There are commissions and committees who have money in their budget but take no action on items well within their purview to get fixed, but fail to do anything. What are your specific plans to address these issues?
Okay. So, I will start with, um...
And happy to repeat any part of it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Um, I'll start with addressing, I think, the first part, which was going sort of outside of the chain of command. Um, I think, and it's one of the things I talked about in my essays, I think it's really important that there be a chain of command, not because, and I love this phrase, but not because you're a power-hungry monster, but because you're somebody, you know, you wanna make sure that you understand the scope of what's going on. There may be other competing priorities that what the board or department may not be aware of. And I think that it's really important to have a centralized location where these decisions come through. If you have committees and boards making decisions sort of off to the side and it's not coming back to the Select Board, it's not coming back to the Town Administrator's Office, it's really difficult to make overall long-term planning goals and decisions. Um, it also is difficult to determine funding and budgeting. And then you hear about something that's going on and you're like, "Wait a minute, I didn't even know about that," which sort of makes the Town Administration and the Select Board look a bit ineffective. I, I think it's really important for everyone to be in the know and on the same page. Um, we did have a Parks and Rec member in my community who was sort of going rogue and, um, going on Facebook and presenting his own platform for how he thought things should be done or more critical of how things were going. And, uh, we actually brought him in and we sat him down and we said, "Listen, you've got concerns, bring them up in the meeting. We'll come to your next meeting, we'll come to any meeting that you want. Let's work together and figure it out." Because going around the system and circumventing it is not the way to get things done collaboratively. Do you mind repeating the second and third parts?
Absolutely, not a problem. I know. Uh, as I told the, the first candidate, my third one, I guarantee you is much smaller. So, for the question, so we're all good.
Fair enough.
So, the, um, so one of them was, "There are commissions and committees who have money in their budgets but take no action on items well within their purview to get fixed, but they fail to do anything."
We have a couple of those. Um, and I think really being on top of your budget and looking at, uh, monthly reports is a great way to start, seeing who's spending what, what's not being spent, reaching out perhaps to those committees and saying, "Hey, are you down volunteers? Are you stuck? What's going on? Or there, is there a lack of consensus on how we should move forward? Can, you know, I come to a meeting, can I bring Joe or Mary or, you know, can I bring in somebody who might be able to help us arrive at consensus on how we should address X, Y, or Z?" I think it's really important if you're on a board or committee to feel like you have a purpose and to feel like you're actually getting something done and you're making recommendations and you're heard. Nobody wants to go to meetings every week and feel like, "Oh, that's nice. I put something on someone's desk and it got covered under a bunch of paper and nobody did anything with it." Um, you know, is it that type of situation where people feel like they're not being heard? So, maybe the committee has become a little bit ineffective. Um, I think talking with the chair and trying to get a sense of what's going on. Um, you know, there's many different ways that you can approach that and offering that support. Um, you know, not saying, "I'm gonna take over your committee by any means," but saying, "What can I offer you on the technical side? Can I help you find people? Can I help hook you up with consultants? Can I help, you know, look at different, you know, funding streams? Is it that you don't have enough money? Maybe we need to look at matching funds from a capital plan or from the next fiscal year's budget so that you can do what you need to do."
And you, you kind of answered the first one on, uh, departments who conveniently forget to follow process.
Oh, yes.
You had, uh, you had talked about that, um, in a couple of your other answers.
Excellent.
Okay.
I did not try to conveniently forget it, I promise.
No, no, that's okay. I, I know mine are wordy, that's why I offered to...
That's okay.
Repeat.
No problem.
So, my question is, um, why are you looking to move from your present job to Berlin, um, as our next Town Administrator? And, or, or tell me what you know or what you've heard about Berlin that, you know, has made this perhaps an attractive, um, job?
Sure. Um, I believe genuinely that I'm ready to become a Town Administrator. I have, you know, over eight years of experience now doing the work, um, at an ATA level. Um, I have had incredible mentors. I've had three wonderful Town Administrators who have literally taken me under their wing and said, "We believe in succession planning. Even if you don't stay here though, we're gonna teach you everything we know." And, um, that would be Kevin Misakar, who is now the Town Administrator in Shrewsbury, uh, Jim Purcell, who has been a Town Administrator all over Massachusetts, and now I have David Genero, um, who is the previous Town Administrator in Oxford. He's in Lester. I've worked with him the longest, it's been five years. We make about ninety-five of the, ninety-five percent of the decisions together. And it got to the point where I would make a recommendation on how I thought something should be handled. And nine times out of ten, he'd go, "Yeah, that's exactly how I would approach it." And you start to realize, "Okay, I'm thinking like a thirty-five, forty-year professional at this point who knows what they're doing. And no, we don't agree perfectly on everything, but I'm generally always on the right track. Um, and if not, I can do a little additional research." Or sometimes people just approach things a little bit differently and that's okay too. Um, the Town Administrator was recently out on medical leave for five weeks, so I filled in and I'm happy to say Lester was not on the front page of the newspaper and it did not burn down. So, very, very happy about these facts. And, um, during that time, unfortunately, I had to put a department head, who's also a longtime friend, on paid administrative leave and that was a challenge. Um, so, I'm not afraid to make those difficult decisions. Um, I genuinely believe in doing what's right. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm looking for a home. Um, Lester has been home for eight years. I love it dearly. Um, the Town Administrator's not ready to retire anytime soon and, and I'm ready to take that next step. And I've looked at a lot of communities. And I really wanted something similar in nature to Lester. Um, Lester is a bit bigger than, um, Berlin, but it is mostly a residential bedroom community for Worcester. And I thought, "Oh, this is interesting, you know? You guys have the four ninety-five corridor, you have what you call kind of your evening or your nighttime residents who live here and commute out and we have a lot of that going on in Lester too." Um, we've also seen some population growth, which not to the extent you've seen here. It's a pretty impressive what you've seen here in Berlin. Um, and I think there are a lot of opportunities that have resulted from your population growth, um, from some of the residential and commercial developments that have happened. Um, I was impressed to see that thirty percent of your tax base comes from CIP. That was really interesting to me. But I also know some of that's tied to retail and mall and that's a challenge, especially since COVID. Everyone's doing things online. Um, you know, Amazon's at my house every day, I'm not gonna lie, I'm guilty. Um, and I used to go to the Solomon Palm Mall as a kid all the time, so maybe, maybe I'll go there all the time now. I'll try to be the only supporter, we'll get that going. Um, but, uh, I just thought it's the same type of community in its nature, but it has more opportunity, um, for me to perhaps make a difference and to lead it going forward. And I've worked for Worcester, not my cup of tea, worked for a county of a half a million people. You get lost. I don't need to have four layers of bosses between me and, you know? I really have learned every facet of local government, working in a small community. Um, for the first three years I was in the Town Administrator's Office, there were two of us. And so we did everything. We don't have an HR director, we don't have an economic development person, we don't have a procurement person, we do it all. Um, we don't have a grant writer, I'm a grant writer. So, um, I just feel like because I've learned all of that, I can bring those skills, um, forward to a community like Berlin and it's really pretty here. It was a really beautiful drive. Um, and I've made it a few times now and love to get out and see more of it, so.
You mentioned HR.
Yes.
Is that, tell me a little bit about the background of the HR.
Sure. So, in our office, we do everything from posting the ad to interviews to onboarding benefits. Um, we do discipline in our office, progressive discipline, performance evaluations, um, offboarding and dealing with, you know, issues that may have to come before the Select Board. We've had some disciplinary hearings before the Select Board. Um, I've worked from every facet, on every facet... I've worked from every facet, on every facet of that spectrum. I've said it on almost every interview that we've had for the past eight years. I really have gained a wealth of knowledge about fit and about being able to figure out who's gonna work best in which position from doing that. A lot of it is just experience and time. HR, you can learn the rules, you can follow the rules, but a lot of it can't be taught. You just have to have that experience of doing it. And then you feel comfortable, you know, knowing how to address situations. I've addressed some very bizarre situations. I, I had a selectman who was insistent on cutting down one dandelion at town hall, and was really mad at the facilities person because that dandelion didn't get cut. And we had to negotiate between, you know, what's going on between the select board member and the facilities director, and try to deal with that. And in the end, we got everybody on the same page. We got everybody in the room, and we said, what's going on? It turns out he was upset about a different project. And so he started kind of picking at things. And you really learn how to be open with people, straightforward. And if there's an issue, you don't let it fester. You address it head-on, you address it respectfully, calmly, and I'm just not somebody who yells or screams, or, I just believe that through effective communication, you can pretty much resolve anything, and that's really what I've learned through the past eight years of doing this.
And that dandelion is still there?
That dandelion's gone.
Oh.
And it will not come back. The roots have been ripped up out of the pavement.
Gotcha. Alright. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
What, what ways have you used or seen used to increase the number and diversity of volunteers serving at commissions and committees for the town?
So, we've done a lot of, as I mentioned, electronic media is kind of a strength of mine. We've done a lot of outreach through social media, through old-school postings in the town hall. We have a news and announcements page on our website, we post there, we email things out. I've even had different departments, I've said, hey, I'm looking for, folks, do you know anybody? Please help spread the word. I've sent out the ads. We post a vacancy list on our website, we're a little behind doing it this year, because we bought a college, which is a whole nother story. Don't buy a college and not add any staff. That, that's a, that's a challenge in and of itself, but we put that out through the website, and a lot of times we work with existing board and committee members because they're in that field or that group, and they may know somebody who has interest in that area. We love to see young people get involved. I know it's been an issue for us and sometimes for other communities to get new blood in. You know, one of the things we've done too is, you know, when people come to our office and they start asking us about X, Y, or Z, we say, hey, if you're interested in this, maybe you wanna put in an application for this committee. So, I think it's always kind of having your eyes and ears out and looking for ways that folks can get involved. And there's a variety of ways that you can do so, but, you know, using the resources you have around you, the people you have around you, and, you know, just trying to get the word out is, is the way to go. You're welcome.
Okay. There's an ever-growing to-do list for the town administrator, along with an ever-growing request for procurements and unforeseen items and emails and multiple late-night meetings. Two-part. How do you prioritize your work? And when do you just say no?
Well, I was a graduate of the DARE program, so I know a lot about not just saying no. Sorry, that's the first thing that came to mind.
Betty Ford.
Yes, exactly. No, I, I set out either at the end of the day or the beginning of the day, and I prioritize. I literally have short-term, medium-term, and long-term lists. I am a list fanatic. And those can change, and, and they shift because they're driven by what is going on at the moment, and what the board is looking for, and if something emergent comes out or urgent arises, and we have to drop everything and address that, that's what we do. My goal is not to be running around putting out fires all the time, I recognize sometimes that happens. Being proactive is much better. So, planning, long-term planning, you know, knowing when deadlines are, being able to plan out in advance and address those items, so you're not running around like a chicken with your head cut off at the last minute, trying to submit a grant application or what have you. You know, also making sure you've got time to get signatures and board approval, and, and all of those are really important. But you have to be flexible. I, I had a mentor at my first job who was a civil engineer, and he told me, you have to be a read-in-the-wind, not rebar. And that always stuck in my head, because first of all, I had no idea what rebar was. I was twenty-five years old, and I'm like, I don't understand this. And he's like, oh, it's like the things that you use to build, it's like, really, you know, they don't bend, they don't move. You can't be rigid. You've gotta be flexible. Okay, I can be flexible. And, I mean, we shift priorities every day. Sometimes I'll start something at eight o'clock in the morning and everything will stack on top of it, and then at the end of the day, I unpack it, I go, oh, yeah, that, that's what I started on at eight o'clock. Well, we'll have to start on that tomorrow, and that's fine. I, I don't have an issue with moving between tasks. I just keep really copious notes, and that keeps us moving. And then there was a second part to that question. Oh, when do you just say, oh, just say no. It's not just dare. I know, how could I forget that? Sometimes, as I was saying before, you have to say, listen, I have this, this, and this. These are the priorities of the select board. You may have different priorities, so let's bring it forward to the select board to see which one they think has the most, carries the most weight at this time and needs to be addressed most urgently. Can this wait two weeks? Can this wait a month? Can we deal with this now? It's end-of-year closeout, everybody's going crazy. I'm sure you have no idea what that's like. You know, we, we really need to push this back. Or is there someone else who could help us with this? Is there maybe a volunteer, if it's a grant, that, that could come in and give us some background information? I don't know if you use senior work-off program, but sometimes that is really helpful too. At certain times of year, I'll bring them in. But sometimes, unfortunately, you just have to say, listen, everybody's completely, you know, exhausted and, and, you know, stretched to the max. And that's just not something we can address at this time. It's important to us, and we can look at it going forward. But I think you really do have to make sure you check in with the select board to make sure that that's the case, and it's not something that they really wanna move forward with. Because if they don't know someone's coming to you to ask for that, they may not have said, oh yeah, that's a priority, but all of a sudden, if you present it, they'll go, oh, wait a minute, no, that's really important to me, I just haven't had a chance to bring it up, and yeah, we need to do that before X, Y, Z. And then I'll say, okay, so who's gonna help me with end-of-year closeout? And then we work together and we come up with a plan and we figure it out, because there's only so much time in a day. I'm willing to put in a good like twenty-two, but I mean, I gotta get at least two hours of sleep. So, you know, we've gotta have some type of balance here, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have anything else that you would like to tell us about yourself that you may not have covered already?
I'm a very passionate person. I'm very energetic, as you can tell. I like to joke around, but I take things very seriously at the same time. I just believe to be in this job, you have to be a people person, you have to love working with people, and that, I feel, is one of my greatest strengths. And when I graduated undergrad, I had no idea what I wanted to do. I had this great liberal arts major of international studies with a focus in sociology and French, and my parents went, what happened to being a doctor? Like, I can understand this, but this, this is just, sounds like a bunch of hooey. And I said, well, you go on, you get a master's degree in something. Okay, so now you get a master's in public administration. What are you gonna administer? Well, something probably government-related, public, international, nonprofit, I'm not really sure. I just knew that from all of the organizations that I've worked with, even from when I was in high school and college, that I had leadership skills and I worked well with people. And I realized that management was really the path that I wanted to take. I'm a very patient person. I'm a very collaborative person. I am not a micromanager. I do not want to do your job. I have enough of my own things to do. But the door is always open, should there be any issues. We can work together on things. I just think as long as that line of communication is open, so much can be accomplished. I have sat through a number of interviews lately, and none of them have felt as good as this one, I'll be perfectly honest. The fit feels right for me. I know it has to feel right for all of you as well. But I will tell you in all honesty, this is where I wanna be, and I hope that you will consider making me your next town administrator.
Any questions for us?
I actually.
That was my next question.
See? Well, I stole it off your paper.
Who's getting to it?
I know.
I'm curious, and I've read a little bit about it in some of, you know, the annual reports and kind of the way you've addressed things at town meeting, but you guys have a real dichotomy, and I mentioned it before, between keeping the rural historic preservation and then bringing in your tax base in the 495 kind of corridor area. I also noticed that there is no desire here to expand to public water and sewer. What is the boards, or, or all of you, what is kind of your feeling on smart growth and expansion in the commercial area while continuing to kind of protect the rural nature? I'm curious as to what your opinions are on balancing that growing the tax base, but also making sure that you protect the rural nature. Leicester's dealing with that along the Worcester line a little bit too, so.
What's the population of Leicester?
Leicester, believe it or not, is actually eleven thousand, but we have very little business. We are really residential. And we don't have 495 or 290, so we're, you know, we have Bruton Eye that goes through us.
Right, right.
We're like a backstop to Worcester, but there's been a lot of downtown development in Worcester, and we see things starting to kind of trickle our way, so.
Well, I think, I will just talk, speak for myself, that when, not this last May, but the last time before that I ran for reelection, I learned a lot from people about how, if you did something that ticked them off, like wanted to bring in, you know, more housing, or wanted to bring, you know, the, it would tick them off. And so, if you wanted to be an elected official for Berlin, you needed to at least agree with the majority of the people in town, that they did not want more housing, they wanted more conservation area. And it was okay, not really okay, for all this commercial business on the outskirts, but it, it was okay, you know, it was becoming okay, right?
It's kind of over there, right?
Yes, and, and I, and I, they, that's what's important to people here.
Sure.
And I think that, maybe that's why they feel that way is because they knew that was the values of the people in the town before they moved here, when they moved here, then it's just more and more of those type of people, and, 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 you know, I, I, I feel like I'm, I am one of those people now. And I feel very much that, you know, what, what they're working towards is, is, is great. That, that is what I represent now too. And I wanna represent the people in the town and what they want, so.
That's great. You have to strike that balance, and you have to be able to provide services, which you need a tax base for, but you also need to preserve what's special, because when it's gone, it's gone. You can't get it back.
Right, right. And we are having some difficulties right now with the Solomon Pond Mall and keeping, I mean, last, this.
I'm going shopping there, I promise.
Okay, alright, well, that will help.
Okay, good.
Size eight and a half, wide?
I'm an eleven, but I'll make sure to get some eight and a half.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Go ahead, Scott.
As, as the newbie, because I've only been in the town, you know, twelve years. Although, it is odd, because I, I straddle that, I'm both one of the sort of newer residents, who does have a job in Boston, or near Boston, and, and, incidentally. I also, my father grew up in this town, my grandparents were extremely active in town government, so I also know some of the town history. I think the balance, I, I don't think we're looking to do much more commercial, but I think we built the commercial on the edges like we wanted to. I think as a town, we have to acknowledge that they are important to the town and provide them the services they need. They're not just a sort of cash cow as well. But I also worry, we, we will have some challenges coming forward as larger landowners who have been farming, how to preserve that land when it comes up and not turn that into some giant development. I think one of the big impetus that our, our planning committee, which I think is very forward-thinking and very knowledgeable, we push to get above the forty D limit, so that, that there can't, there wouldn't necessarily be giant developments in this town that don't follow zoning and planning and the master plans. And I think it's important to make sure that committee still keeps its resources, that we listen to the master plan, we give inputs into it and continue following it as we try to balance it, because I think one of the charms of this town is its rural nature. I think the fact you put so much in the conservation does help preserve some of it as well. And then we, what the CPA, I think is gonna be that sort of tool we're gonna be able to use to continue to hold on to it as long as we can. As you pointed out, there are pressures at Worcester and Boston and Framingham, and wherever I'll start growing, there will be more and more pressures on this town.
I love the CPA, by the way. We're just looking into it, and I'm like, we gotta get this, this is so great.
It has been very helpful.
I mean, as a, I grew up here. In fact, this building was my elementary school. I know, how cool is that? You know, and I forget what room this was. This was sixth grade, I think, and the spot behind this was where we hung our coats, and on the other side was the other sixth grade. So, you know, this is, this is my town. And I have that balance of, I love the small feel of this town, but at the same time, I look at taxes that continually go up, and I look at the lack of services that the town has. So, you know, water, sewer, trash, things like that. You know, so how do you balance that? How do you bring those businesses in and not make them take the bill, you know, for, for taxes? I don't know what's out there for more economic development and growth. Even when you go up to Highland Commons, there's stores that are blank, spots that are blank, and I, and I think what could be there? Could we, you know, box outside? Could we do offices? You know, for people who are work, still working at home, but dear God, I can't work at home anymore because the walls are starting to close in, you know, type of thing. So, it's trying to bring in, you know, women-owned businesses, small, you know, owned businesses, to try and keep that small-town feel of Berlin, but to understand, unfortunately, we can't stay as small-town Berlin. And as Chris and Scott have said, you have old-timers, I'll put myself in that bucket, you know, that wanna see the town in a certain way. And then you have others that are like, oh, no, we need, you know, put a cell tower in, put, you know, solar in, put this in, put that in. So, there's a. Absolutely, absolutely. If you spend any time at the general store or at the dump, AKA the transfer station, you'll quickly find out those opinions.
Those are the spots. There's always spots.
Yes, because people may not come to a meeting like this. And I used to kid when I was first elected, when I'd be at the dump, someone would come up to me and say, are you Peg Stone? And I would say, no, that's my sister. And I would walk away.
Great. I'll use my maiden name since I just got married. No, I'm sorry.
Right, and then they'd run into me and they'd be like, I'd be like, yeah, that's me, that's me. So, you know, like Chris said, you do have to be open, and sometimes the decisions we make are not the most.
Everybody's not gonna like everything.
Yeah, so, you know, like you, here's my information, here's my research that I've done. I will speak to you based on fact, and as much as I will try, I will try to keep emotion out of it. But yeah, I'm not gonna make always the popular decision, you know, for that. And, you know, so it's, I want growth, I want expansion, I wanna stay small. But it's kind of like, you can have it now, you can have it right, or you can have it right now, pick one. You can't have both. So, I think if we could maybe slowly move a little bit and invite some opportunities in, look at the buildings that we have in town. Can we repurpose them? Does that open up opportunities?
Right. Or, or does it open a can of worms?
Or does it open a can of worms? You just have to be flexible and know that people are gonna be like spot-on, and people are gonna be, you're dumber than a bag of rocks, you know, type of thing. And understand that both are okay.
Yeah.
You know, whatever your opinion is, it's the right opinion.
Absolutely. It's, it's great to hear that you're willing to look at the tough decisions and make the tough decisions, and that you acknowledge that not everyone is going to be happy. That, that is the nature of the select board. It's a, it's a, it's a tou, it's not an easy job. My job is to try to make it easier for you, so.
I mean, you hear it when you go to committee meetings, and it's like, well, you're making a mountain out of a molehill. And it's like, I'm following process, and I'm following procedure, and yeah, it's not good, but at the end of the day, I'm trying to do what is best for you to protect the interest of the town.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, when I was little, we used to burn fires, burn tires for Fourth of July. So, I mean, when I was little, we used to burn fires, burn tires for Fourth of July, you know?
DEP is not such a fan of that.
Yeah, I don't think DEP would, you know, or like grease up a pig and have people try and chase it, so I'm quite thinking people wouldn't be happy with that now. But you know what? As a kid, that's what I remember, you know, and, and that's the memories that I have of this town, growing up. And I never caught the pig, just saying.
It's still out there.
It's still out there. It's, that pig is still out there. Mm-hmm.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I appreciate you coming in, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity, and thank you for sharing your viewpoints, too, because that's very interesting for me to hear, how you all are kind of thinking about those issues, because that was the big issue that jumped out at me in everything I looked at, so.
And I, and I think, you know, we all bring something different to the table.
Correct.
And, you know, I think we work well as far as trying to come to agreement or, you know, kind of an agreement or whatever, you know?
You don't have to agree, but you have to be able to have the conversation. Correct, that's my attitude.
Yeah, correct.
We've been fine with two-to-one votes, and I don't think any one of us would be fine with a two-to-one vote if the one was really, really, really opposed. I think we would have tried to find a way to adjust things so that either if it's still going to be two-to-one, it's not as objectionable to the person who was the one vote.
Sure.
The three of us are clearly not a two-to-one block, any two of us, or say, one of us, we've all been the one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I actually, I have to say, I like that, because I like that you're willing to stand up for what you believe in, and if you really feel strongly about something, be the dissenting vote. I, I think, I've seen how town governments and city governments work in a lot of different ways, and sometimes people are pushed to, oh, let's all be unanimous, and that's not reality.
No.
So, you know, you should be able to vote your conscience and vote based on the information you have and what you feel.
Agreed.
Right.
Awesome.
We just need the assistant of a town administrator.
Well, hopefully I can do that assistance. That's my goal.
Right.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Safe ride home?
Yes, thank you very much. Very nice to meet you. So nice to meet you.
Thank you, nice to meet you, too.
Nice to meet you. Nice to see you again.
See you again.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Chris, are you taking a scenic drive home? Is that what you're doing?
I'm gonna do the scenic route. I did the 495 route this time. Last week I did the scenic route, and it was much better.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna do that route, that route on the phone, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have a shorter break. Yeah? So, we'll be back in ten.
Courtney, have a seat. Courtney is fourteen-year-plus professional.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Professional with-
I'm Chris.
Nice to meet you.
Most recently in Webster.
This is Scott.
Where's your camera?
Courtney, let me make my speech, I got it all prepared, I got twenty minutes.
Sorry, Buzz.
She's a seasoned professional HR, is her specialty collective bargaining, negotiations, laborations, budget finance. The interesting thing about Courtney is, we know a number of the town administrators that she has worked for over the fourteen years that she's been in the profession, so she's been well-mentored.
Great, great town administrators that I've had the pleasure of working under. But I just wanted to start out and say thank you very much for having me here, it's a pleasure.
I'm happy that you're here.
Okay. Let's see. I thought we'd ask you if you wanted to give us a brief overview of where you've been, you know, maybe what attracted you to Berlin?
So, I'll start off by saying I was born and raised in Holden, very small community. I, I went to Wachusett Regional High School, which is a regional school with Paxton, Princeton, Rutland Sterling. I had great education there, loved the small town. I got my undergrad at Becker College in Legal Studies. I went on and got my MBA, MSOL, two master's degrees. I started with local government as an intern, because it interested me. Legal-wise, I was looking at maybe doing real estate, but when I got pulled in, I, I just loved it, it was a passion. And I started working for the town of Webster, and I was there for two, two-and-a-half years, and then I went over to the town of Webster, and I've been there twelve-plus years, and I love it. So, I am very honest, I'm very open, I'm very candid. I don't apply to places very often, I actually haven't in years. This is my first time in several years that I've probably applied to a place, just because I want to make sure that I'm gonna be able to go into a community and know that it's a good fit, and that I'm going to bring something to the community, and the community is going to have me there long-term. And that's what I'm looking for, a long-term position. Like I said, I've been with the town of Webster for twelve years, very stable, I, I know everybody there, and that's what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a place, not as a stepping stone, I'm looking for a place to be a town administrator throughout the rest of my career. Berlin has beautiful natural resources, and that's exactly what I grew up with. Trails, hiking trails, fishing, baseball fields, oh, I even looked today and I saw you guys are getting pickle courts. You already have pickle courts, but that's like the biggest thing. They have stuff online about pickle courts, and that's exactly what I grew up with. And something that I see that I do right now in the town of Webster, we have a beautiful lake, and it's a natural resource, and it's overused right now, and we're looking at ways to preserve that. But I think that that's something that, you know, I see in Berlin that I would love to do, is help preserve the natural beauty of the town.
So, I'll start off with the first question. With all the open-meeting law constraints and the need for transparency for the community and for elected officials, what would be your style when working with the select board members of Berlin? For example, when, say, several of the members of the select board disagree? And just how would you handle that?
So, number one is communication, transparency, making sure that all the board members are aware of what's going on. I always say the last thing you want to do is go to the supermarket, go to a ball field or go somewhere and hear pieces of information that you should have heard from before. You know, just if something's going on in town, you guys should be aware of it first thing. So, making sure that the communication lines are open, making sure the chief of police, the fire chief, EMS, they're making sure they're communicating with me so I can communicate with you. The transparency part, the town of Webster, we are designated, our own departments are designated, our own open-meeting law or, not open-meeting law, but our own public request information designee. So, those actually flow through the departments, but most of them end up with me anyways. So, when they're looking for contracts or something like that, everything mostly is public, so it's available, make it available. You guys have a great website. You guys put your contracts on there, I could look through all your contracts, I can look and see your different trails that you have, I see all your meetings, where they're posted. You guys have a great website. So, transparency, communication with the board is number one.
Okay, thank you.
For, for you, what is the, what do you think is the ideal role for the select board members in supporting the town administrator and town employees?
I think the board of selectmen need to have an active role. You guys have been elected by the community to represent their best interests, so I need to be very open and have that good line, like I said, of communication with you guys. Your, your role is to represent the town and the people that elected you. So, there, you guys, I, I know all the time, you, I don't, I commend you guys, because seeing what the board of selectmen goes through, and, you know, everybody pushing their needs and wants and concerns on you, and having to, you know, try to resolve those issues. Yeah, the board of selectmen plays a big role in the, into what the town administrator does, the day-to-day activities handled by the town administrator, but the overall goals and what we're looking to do in the future, it's derived by you, elected by the residents here in town.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm ready.
It's long. Tell me to stop, tell me to repeat. Ready? Okay. When there's a suspected open-meeting, and we didn't like do this, we didn't, we didn't see the questions ahead of time, so some of them overlap.
Okay.
So, when there is a suspected open-meeting law violation, discovered either by attending a meeting or watching a playback, what is your process to address it? Including, but not limited to, education, penalties for violations under the law, up to and including expulsion of the offender or offenders? And would there be any difference between a violation from an elected position or appointed?
So, we have a very nice gentleman that loves to review all of our board meetings, agendas, postings, so we are very aware of the open-meeting law. I actually was going through in, in our committee, we have a committee handbook in town, and with that, we go through the responsibilities, state ethics, and we make sure that they, the first thing is the conflict of interest in state ethics. We go through all of, of everything that needs to be done. We do see agendas that are trying to be posted that don't conform to the open-meeting law. General discussion, they'll catch you on that. We got caught on, when we renewed our liquor licenses, we, someone had brought up to us that we didn't list our liquor license in their locations. So, we had an open-meeting law, and when you try to rectify that and move forward, they're very patient with you, are not trying to fine you. And I think that just educating your staff on the proper ways to post your meetings, making sure that the door is open during a meeting, that's a big one. The Council on Aging in, in, at our town did not like the door open, and we're like, well, you know, actually, it's a public meeting, the door is open, you get a great breeze, you know, it's, if you need a larger location, we can get it for you. But definitely making sure that each of the committees know what they're doing. If we catch an open-meeting viola, violation or something that is posted wrong, definitely approaching the staff, making sure that the chairman of that committee knows how to properly post, how to make sure that the meeting isn't going off-topic. A lot of people will put something on the agenda, go off-topic, and, you know, they have a book, Robert Rules, that a lot of committees have, and they go through. Just making sure that they know what needs to be done to make sure that they stay, you know, in compliance.
So, would you see any difference between someone who's elected, like Chris, for an open-meeting law violation? See, it's always nice, you know, she-
Yeah, she's, yeah, it's always her fault.
Right, in the years, right, in the years that we've always worked together, she's always been my, you know, Chris, you know, did this and that.
The one you kicked under the table.
This is true, I had knee surgery, I told everyone, Chris kicked me. Yeah, so, you know, someone who's elected versus someone who's appointed.
Everybody is the same. Everybody needs to be treated the same, whether elected or appointed, they have to follow those rules.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I know where I stand, huh?
I know. Doesn't matter which side you sit on, for me.
Tell me about your organizational skills.
So, I am a very organized person, whether it's at home or at work. I make sure I have bullet points for this meeting, I make sure that I'm keeping track of everything. You have to be organized, especially when you're pulled in all different directions here. You, you're working on one thing, an emergency happens, you're putting out fires. So, this, one of my town administrators actually used an app called Workflowy, and you could create a bullet point and then use a hashtag at the end with a date, so that you could read, just, you could just put in that, and it would pull it up throughout this whole program to when you were to revisit it again. It's kind of like a matrix, but then it can, kind of gave you a different way to, you know, keep track of all these different projects that are going on. So, multi, you know, you need to multitask, you need to make sure that you're organized, and, you know, you have to keep track of what you're doing, because yes, you can put this one on the back burner, but it's gonna have to be addressed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
What strategies do you employ to keep a healthy work-life balance when doing an all-consuming job like town administration?
A town administrator's job is 24/7, because I can tell you, I've been at the baseball field with my son, who's now in high school, but he, you know, I was at the baseball field on a phone call. It's, it's a 24-hour job, so there is a work-life balance. My kids are older, my, my daughter's actually a sophomore in college, my son is now in high school, so I actually dedicate more time to work, just because they don't want to hang out with me anymore. But it, I think you have to be involved in the community, you have to give that extra time. It's not just, hey, we open at nine o'clock, we leave at four o'clock, it does, it's not like that you have night meetings, you have events that you want to go to, it's being out in the community. So, there, there's a balance, like coming here, we just had, I just ended a selectmen's meeting in Webster, coming here, I put on 80s music, and that's my, that's my way to, you know, be a little bit balanced, I clean my house, so, you, you do, you find those little niches that you can, you know, decompress some ways. But for me, I actually like doing that, it's not just a job, it's going to those events, seeing those people. I love when people come in and they know your name, they know, you know, how, how is this person doing, how is your wife doing? So, I have that every day in Webster, is, is that you build that trust in that, with the community, so, you know, that, I, I do the same thing here.
Okay. Right.
Back to another problem she created?
My fault, it's not my fault to have long those questions. I know, I know. I know, no one was with me when I wrote these, I just kept like babbling and babbling to myself. All right, ready?
Yep.
There are departments who conveniently forget to follow process and procedures. There are committees and commissions who sidestep the process and go directly to a department to take action to assist them with an item without seeking approval or understanding the proper channels of communication. There are commissions and committees who have money and budgets, but take no action on items well within their purview to get fixed, but they fail to do anything. What are your specific plans to address these issues?
Training. Training, training, and more training. The state comes in and they actually offer certain trainings, like we've had the state come in and talk to the Conservation Commission, because they've overstepped their bounds or they, they weren't in their purview of what they were doing. So, we have, the state will come, you know, in and do an open-meeting law training, they'll come in and do different trainings for that. There, there's stuff in the budget that we can find and squeeze to make sure that they're sent to training, cross-training, that was a big thing during the pre-interview. I absolutely love cross-training. Making sure that a department, within a department, knows what each other is doing. Making sure that our payroll clerk understands what our assistant town accountant is doing to make sure that if someone's out, they can do payroll, or someone can do the vendor warrants. So, cross-training is important. Yeah, just, it was a, it was a big question.
It was a big question. I can break it down, want me to break it down for you a little bit? All right, so we'll start like on the bottom one. So, committees and commissions who have money in their budgets, they don't take action, there's things that they should get fixed, but they don't do anything.
So, yeah, it's the, it's the, it's the educational piece of that. Why they do not want to spend money is beyond me, because there's accounts, you know, and it's maybe just to engage, for the town administrator, to engage with that committee, to say, this is what you guys have, these are the resources, let's, you know, whether it's a planting of flowers, let's utilize those funds in a way to benefit the- for the town administrator, to engage with that committee, to say, this is what you guys have. These are the resources, let's, you know, whether it's a planting of flowers, let's utilize those funds in a way to benefit the town. Otherwise, they surplus, you know, at the end of the year. But, you know, we want to spend that money, we want to make the town beautiful, we want to get those services and spend that money. That's what it's there for in the beginning of the budget process, is that we put that money in there to spend. So, the educational piece of it, because most of them are volunteers, so they might not know what to do or with the process. So, making sure that someone is there to guide them, and that would be the town administrator's role.
And what about those folks who go around the process and don't ask? What's that old adage, better to ask for permission than beg for forgiveness, or something like that? So, you know-
No, better to beg for forgiveness than-
Than ask for permission, you know, so the process is one, two, three.
Yep.
I, member of, insert committee name here, go from one to three.
Yeah, they need to understand by training, by someone being involved, to make sure that they're doing that process right. Understanding their role as a committee and understanding what the process is. And then, if they're not following that, then, you know, you look at different things of, of, you know, is there a little action plan you can, um, put in place? Okay, are we going to meet bi-weekly now? Are we understanding it? So, there's different things that you can put in place to make sure they're getting on the right track.
Awesome, thank you.
So, my next question is, why are you looking to move from your present job to Berlin as our next town administrator?
So that's a perfect question. Like I mentioned in earlier, um, I, you can Google me, my name, I haven't applied in other places. Um, I don't think it's fair to another community to apply, um, if my heart wasn't into it, um, if I didn't think that I could bring something to them, the stability that I'm looking for. Um, Berlin has that. Um, you guys, your town is just beautiful. I have, I, I said bullet points to describe Berlin, you're inviting, you're alive, you're, you're attractive, you're picturesque, um, you're moving forward. Those are some things, when I think about Berlin, I think about, like, being here long-term. I'm not looking at the stepping stone. Um, you can see by me being in Webster, I was, you know, very stable with them. I did different things there, I did liquor licenses, I've, I'm a notary public. I have done taking on stuff that I didn't have to take on because we're short-staffed, and I can multitask, and I think that I can come here and bring new ideas, maybe different ways that, you know, we can look at different options for different things here. Conservation, your, your fire department, your traffic congested shopping areas that are on almost every, uh, safety committee agenda. Um, there's, there's so many things that I see that I, when I was searching and looking at this town that I think that I can be a part of and help with.
Okay, thank you. Scott? Okay.
He's typing.
It's, you're very busy.
Um, uh, in what ways have you used in Webster or, or seen used that could increase or do increase the number and diversity of volunteers serving on, uh, town commissions and committees?
So actively listening to your volunteers and making them, I think I put this in, in my essay, and I think it does a great deal in Webster, I know it has. Making them feel, um, your volunteers feel that they're being listened to, making them, that they're making an impact on the town. More people tell their friends, hey, we're making a difference, and they come more involved. Um, actively listening to your volunteers. I know that in the screening committee, I commend them, they had three different roles. They wore so many different hats. And to get more people involved, and it's just, um, making sure you're going out there, you're speaking with different, you know, you're speaking with the people at the library, all these events that the Recreation Committee are putting on. I loved coffee with the town-
Coffee talk.
Yeah, coffee talk, I loved that idea. How great is that, when someone comes in to talk to you? Isn't that a great way to rope them in? And, and to say, well, you'd be great on the conservation, you'd be great on the planning. So when they have a problem and they come to you seeking, just be like, you know, you have great ideas, why not bring that in? And I, uh, there was also, I, I loved it, there was a twilight gazing or something that you guys also did. And I think these events that you guys have are, are, are great ways to bring the community together, but it's a great way to also like, kind of, you know, get your volunteers to be involved.
All right. All right, last question. There is an ever-growing list to do for the town administrator, whether it's additional requests for procurements, unforeseen items, emails, late-night meetings. So how do you prioritize your work? And when do you say no?
I always say, we're putting out fires, but, um, Berlin is very stable. Um, you guys do have your challenges here in town. And I would definitely seek the input and meet with the Board of Selectmen to make sure I understood your goals and your visions, and the residents' visions of what they're seeking in me. Um, meeting with department heads and understanding, everybody has their own different perspectives. So making sure you're going out with the police chief, your fire chief, your EMS, your different department heads, and knowing that, and having them show you what their issues are in town. Um, to, you know, and then prioritize them in, in different categories of high priority. Your, you know, your strategic planning of long-term goals. Uh, you're not, we're not going to solve, you know, the bigger issues overnight, um, but we can work towards, you know, tossing around ideas of finding different solutions. Um, but definitely making sure, like, using Workflowy as different, you know, to gauge of what the priorities are. A full list of TA goals, like I said, short-term, long-term, strategic planning of what, you know, we're looking at to get done in the town.
And when do you say no? Or do you?
I do say no. You have to say no. Um, especially if it's something, you can't drag an idea along that can't come to fruition. Um, so I think that, yes, you could always try to see if there's a possibility, but at some point, you're going to have to say no to say an idea. Um, you know, if, if there is something that, a budget item that just isn't in the books, like if you, if you're looking for maybe a full-time conservation, not a conservation, full-time Board of Health agent just for this town. Well, that's not maybe what we can do, but here's alternatives. So that's a no, but there's always, okay, let's look at alternatives. So, yes, you have to say no, um, but let's see what else we can do.
Thank you.
So Courtney, do you have anything else that you would like to tell us about yourself that you may not have covered already?
Let me see. Oh, there's so many, like, uh, I've said, like, I loved your transparency, your Recreation Committee, your pickleball and basketball courts, your Easter egg hunts. Um, you know, the possibility of expanding that, of, I know Webster just had a carnival. Um, one of the greatest things, uh, I just remember growing up is, um, so in Holden, and on our football field, we had a cow tip festi- cow chip festival.
I like the cow, I like the cow tip better, but yeah.
And, and a lot of people don't know what that was when I speak with them.
We had one years ago. We did.
Yes.
Yeah.
And it, and it's a great, small town, you guys have so much, that's why I applied. And I just, and I get excited talking about Berlin and, and just being here because it is so much like my hometown, growing up, and you guys have so much pride. I love the American flags, I just love how much pride you guys have. Um, just your Recreation Committee and going out and picking up Earth Day bottles, and how many nips you guys picked up, thousands of nips. I mean, that was-
You strike that from the-
I was so impressed by Bob Blair. Bob Blair did an amazing job.
None of those nips were consumed that day.
Like you, you guys have one, I, I, a gem for our town. And it's just a, a great town. Um, cross-training, uh, one of our, um, things that we're doing now is our library actually took out, on a intern from a local college, and they're actually working on a media platform to promote. So I was thinking, like, you know, maybe there's room here for an intern program for a local college that they could come and help. We touched upon challenges and, looking at the challenges of the, not having an on-call fire department. So the town of Webster actually was an on-call fire department, but we applied for a safer grant, and we were able to get, um, five full-time firefighters, and, for three years, that they paid for. And then we came up with the idea was, we're going to offset that after the three years with the money that we're getting in from the cannabis agreement that we have, the host agreement. Um, but, so, just to put in perspective, Webster's population is 7,000, a little over 7,000. Our fire department had 726 calls. Your population is a little over 3,000, and you guys had 800 calls. And it's an on-call. You, you know, those are things that need to be looked at, and I would love to like, help you guys step forward into looking at those different things. Um, your cable contract, your charter communications contract, love it, right? Um, people don't understand, they're like, we hate charter. Well, you gotta, the infrastructure in the town is, is, the poles are owned by National Grid. In order to bring new infrastructure into town, that company would have to go to National Grid and say, can we put that infrastructure on your poles? And there, that's a lot of money. So, to be stuck with charter, people, you know, so our contract actually expires in 2013. Yours don't, doesn't expire till 2020, no, ours expires 2023, you guys' contract doesn't expire till 2026. But we're actually doing the process now, and a lot of people, especially during COVID, had dropped the cable, um, services, but they're still using internet. So, we get a kickback for our PEG access on the users. So, we're trying to, you know, revisit our contract, the new contract, with saying, instead of cable users, can we do internet users too? So that we can upgrade our audio system, um, within our, you, selectmen's meeting room, in our PEG access, um, to make sure that we have those three channels to broadcast to the residents. Um, just, you, your website, your, you have your TA goals, you, um, you're, you had your select board objectives up there, and it was a, you guys have a great website. And just looking through in your tax takings, you guys had, have one person that you guys can go for a tax taking. And I mean, it, it, you know, we have done several tax takings and auctions in Webster, and it definitely helped putting those properties back on the tax rolls. So those are just different things that, just, you know, looking through the town and seeing different things that I can bring, those are definitely stuff I wanted to bring up.
Are there any questions that you have for us?
So, I know that the town-
When's the pickleball court going to be ready?
Like I said, there's an app on there, there's an app online somewhere that, uh, you can book pickleball, and it's like, it's at our beach, we don't even have access to that, but that is, that's a growing thing. So, uh, the preservation of Webster Lake is, um, it's overutilized. It's in our natural resource, and, um, speaking with our current TA, um, he said that a lot of places, a lot of communities always try to protect their natural resources, um, where we have, like I said, let it go overused. Um, the Board of Selectmen actually went to town meeting, and they just banned jet skis. Because they determined that jet skis were one of the most, the biggest safety and environmental hazard to the lake, so we banned access from our memorial beach. Um, so, um, I know I saw your Earth Day cleanup, but I, you know, I was thinking like, what is Berlin, or do you, have you identified what your number one contributor is to impacting your natural resources here?
Nips.
Yeah, true, that's why, like I said, yeah.
Well, people are very, very good about-
Extremely passionate about that, yep.
As far as Earth Day and picking up trash, and, I mean, there's people all over town just picking up, I mean, like you said, Bob Blair.
Yeah, but, yeah.
He's a big one.
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, Berlin's very big on conservation as well. Um, we just purchased, was it 100 acres?
Yeah, 100 acres.
100 acres of land that, um, people used all the time, didn't know that it was private property. They just went on it. Um, I skated on that pond as a kid. I'd walk right through the neighbor's yard, hop the wall, down the fa- down the hill, and I'd go skating. Uh, you know, so people are very passionate about conservation, but then people are also very not passionate about conservation. We have, we have enough, you know, but then, um, you know, Scott had brought up, um, in a conversation earlier, as our farmers stop farming, there's all that land that's available. So of course you're going to have half the town wanting to buy it, and half the town wanting to sell it. So it's, it's a very fine balance.
Absolutely.
You know, of, of that.
There's also still struggles on how to use our conservation plan too. I mean, that we want the big open spaces, but try, I, I think there'll be, especially as, uh, the town's grown, the people who want to use it for biking versus horse riding, uh, versus, you know, walking your dog. Uh, we want to motorize stuff, but, but you begin to see some increased use of some of the more popular trails. Um, and you think of all the problems we've had in 40 caves, both with these being able to fire to be able to get in there, but people doing things that left lands that is not great for the land or safe.
Yeah, and the natural environment, like, the, the wildlife, and, I mean, we had a program where we offered kayaks, you know, from Webster Lake, and, and it was a great success, you know. So, I, I understand that, you know, trying to find that balance of your natural resources and development. And then, uh, the, the other question, was there any additional information I could provide to you guys to help you?
You know, I, I, here's your part of my paper. You know, and you're in my book too, so no, it's, um, I think a lot of the questions that I had when I was making my questions, um, you had answered for that. So I'm, I'm good, I don't think there was anything else that I can find through, because I kept going back to my notes, I'm like, yes, you talked about that. Yeah, you talked about that one, so I, yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Thank you.
Yes, it was also quite good, and, and I'm in a good spot.
Me too, thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. We have a town pond, it won't fit many canoes, but just saying.
The kayaking, if you do, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lovely to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, look at Scott, oh, you got to wave to Scott. There you go.
Thank you.
Now comes the fun part.
Yes.
It's called the hard part.
I don't know how easily or difficult it was to hear me, I, I was able to, being remote, I was able to follow on quite well with everything that was going on.
Good, good.
I mean, definitely, before we start, um, members of the TA committee that are here, thank you.
Absolutely.
The candidates that you passed forward, um, in my book right here, uh, I went through, as I started going through notes, and I thought, what does Berlin need? HR, grants, budgets, procurement, consulting, I have no idea what that says. Grievance, and then I put the, the candidate's name down the side, and as I was reading, I was checking off and not paying attention. And then at the end, I went, crap. And then at the end, I went, crap, they're all equal across the board. So thank you, but no thank you, uh, you know, uh, but no, you guys did a great job, so appreciate all, all your work.
And your time that you put in.
Yep, to bring these candidates forward. Yep, great finalists. All right, all right.
Well, we can say as, as observers to the TASC committee, uh, they had a rough time narrowing it down.
Yeah.
Um, I think the consensus was that you had some good candidates.
Mm-hmm.
We had five we were going to interview, if you recall. Uh, one, uh, got another job, uh, and another one was a quality person, but the committee kind of talked back and forth about the right fit to Berlin. And the three candidates you see before you were, what they determined would be the right fit for you guys to determine who's the next TA.
Yeah.
They worked very well with us. It was a good group, uh, like the last time, it was a good group.
Yeah.
And hopefully they gave you, uh, some good candidates to think about.
Yeah, oh yeah. So how would you like to do this? Do you want to share or each of us share how we're feeling about these candidates? Yeah, um, I'll go last. I'm sorry, Scott, what did you say?
I have no prob, I have no problem going first.
All right, would you like to then?
Yeah, so I think as a whole, I would have no problem putting all three names into it, I'd be grabbing one out and.
Agreed.
I think we would be fine as a town, no matter which one of the three we chose. Um, and so I'm allowed to say some preferences and why, but I want to say that this is a, this is a narrow grouping of them. Um, I would be fine with any answer. Um, I, uh, I think at the end, um, I like the second candidate, Kristen, the best. Um, I think there's some, uh, uh, I think she has some strong sort of connections to the town, she sort of gets Berlin, uh, the most. Uh, it is the sort of, uh, economic development, you know, I was saying grant writing, grant registration stuff, uh, her procurement, uh, background, I think is the strongest of them, although they all have some skills in those areas. Um, and, uh, I, I think she would be here for a bit. Um, uh, my, my second favorite was our, our first candidate, Jennifer, who we had at the energy level that I, uh, uh, adore. Uh, her legal background was going to be great. Uh, I, I, she's been, her tenure tends to be about three years in each place. Um, I think she would be great for the town, I think she would, uh, improve us in some areas. I don't think she would necessarily be here for the, the, the long term. Um, and, and again, I'm looking for minor things. I, I think at the end of the day, here, one term, two terms, you know, the rest of their career is, is a minor thing, so I think all these people are generally skilled. I think Courtney, uh, I, I think she would definitely be here, I believe her when she says she'd be here the rest of her career, I believe that she has chosen this as a job to apply for. Uh, I, I think she can interview as great as the other two. I think that could be because she doesn't do interviews, uh, uh, on a regular basis, hasn't been to, let's say, six or eight, or I have no idea of the others, but in, in a period of time. Um, and so I'm, I'm, I'm making some assumptions because I thought her acting was quite good and her skills are quite good. Uh, but, but I, I give a couple of small, again, small orders because I would still be likely for us to finalist.
Okay. All right. I have to say, Scott, uh, did you read my notes?
Yeah, I did.
You can see them, they're right here. Did you see, did you look at them? So I'm just going to sort of read the notes that I wrote down, which weren't too many. Um, uh, Kristen was bubbly, outgoing. Um, she suggested that if there were issues that they could be hashed out. She had the HR background and communication, of course, was a big, um, a big factor. Um, she would be coming to town events. Um, she seemed very well organized and passionate and has leadership, had definitely had leadership skills. She was my, I would say, my first choice. Um, Jennifer probably would be my second choice. I, I agree with Scott that, um, the lawyer could come in handy. Um, and she also said that she would be coming to events. I think I was caught up in, you know, seeing and talking and listening to, um, the interview and then I just kind of forget to write more down. Um, uh, Courtney, I think, um, the stu, I don't think she answered my question about the style she would use with the select board. Um, and I think some of the other questions, I think she had trouble actually answering the questions. Um, and I have to say that I think Kristen or Jennifer probably would be a be, better public speaker. And that's basically my notes.
So I'm going to be that dissenting one that we talked about and, um, my first choice is Jennifer, uh, for, for our TA. She's got, uh, the one thing that struck me about her was that, you know, she made it clear that she was not afraid to go out of the box. And I think that sometimes we all get stuck in our box, that this is the way we've done it, this is the way we've always done it, hey, it's not too bad, we'll make it work. Um, I think that Jennifer would challenge us and challenge us in a good way to, you know, help to continue to take care of the town. Um, she's got the experience in contract negotiations. Uh, all three of them had giant preparation for budget. Uh, one of them had like a, let's see, Kristen did, uh, $30 million budgets, Courtney did $54 million budgets, Jennifer did $41 million budget. So I don't think we have to be concerned at all about experience with budgets and helping our, you know, town accountant. Uh, you know, they've got the, the MCPPO, the, the contracting, which we need. Um, I like how she also talked about how she has significantly increased citizen engagement, uh, you know, for, for us. Uh, yeah, I like it that she's an attorney, but you know what? I don't think that she's going to use her attorney-ness, you know.
Right.
In, in this, which, which is great because unfortunately I think we, there's been issues prior, um, you know, with that, but she knows enough, she even quoted, God, she was talking about something, we were talking about open meeting law and she went right into, oh, well, the Senate and the House. So she, out of all of them, seemed more up to speed on different items that were going on within the state and how they could.
Open meeting law.
Yeah, and how they could affect us, um, for that. And the one thing that I really liked about Jennifer, um, she was no nonsense. You know what? If there's an issue, she's running straight to it and she's going to get it fixed. It's no, eh, we'll work, no, it's, it's going to be addressed. Uh, so my first selection would be Jennifer, followed by Kristen, followed by Courtney. But to back up Scott, I think with any of these three, um, the town will be in good hands, but I prefer it to be in Jennifer's, um, wheelhouse.
I guess I thought that, um, Kristen's, uh, you know, if somebody comes on strong, sometimes that's a, a turnoff for some people, not, not, you know, not that, um, I, I just thought that, um, Kristen's, uh, demeanor, meeting people, I think, I thought that would be, um, more positive, uh, for some people in town. Trying to think, you know, which one would, would, um, which one would people most like to work with or, um, talk to, be, be willing to talk to if they had an issue.
I like Jennifer's question on the measure of success, one year from now, what are we all looking for?
Yeah.
I thought that was a great question and I'm just like, brain, come on, hurry up and kick in with, uh, with some ideas for that.
I know.
I agree about the, the lawyer just, I, I, when I was reading the essays and, and looking at the qualifications, uh, Jennifer was probably third on my list because I was worried about that, what you call the lawyer just, you know, that, that, uh, and, and I agree that she did not go across it that way at all, she, you know, and she has a knowledge of it, but doesn't use the, the word says shall and not will and therefore, you know, we must do this thing. I think she'd be one of those that like, the law says this and this is how we use that to do what we want to do as a town with these limitations and not the law as the reason why we can't do something.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, and I like your ideas of checks and balances. I think it's something that we've all thought about and all wish that we had, but, you know, time is short, you know, when things happen, it's like, oh yeah, we'll get back to it and sometimes we don't get back to it. Um, but with her, I, I, I like that, you know, that, um, you know, her comment on, she's going to be here, where should I, Boylston? Um, yeah, I, you know, kind of like Margaret did. When there was a community event, Margaret was seen walking down Linden Street, picking up trash and Margaret was at, at, uh, at Old Home Day. I kind of get the feeling from her that she'd be the same way, you know? I can see her hanging out at the general store, having coffee with people and figuring out what's going on and.
Listening.
To them, not to say that the, I didn't see that the others, that they couldn't, but I just got.
Oh no, I thought, I thought, um, Kristen also said that she.
Yeah.
Has her, um, stepson.
Yes.
However often, and.
Every other week.
They do events.
Yep.
Where they go to, you know, the town she works in.
But no, and, and I liked it too, you know, Jennifer has a lot of the housing background and, you know, and even though we're in good shape with, with housing, um, you know, in 40Bs, you can't always count on that 16%, you know, to be there, so it's.
Better be able to.
Well, I know, but you know, and what happens if it's not? She kind of like seems that person who is a little bit of a, a forward thinker, a what if, she may not act on it, but it's probably right here, so that when something comes up, she's going to be able to pounce on it. Um, but yeah, she's definitely, um, she's definitely my first choice, Jennifer.
Your, your thoughts on, on Kristen's comments that, that Kristen might be sort of more easygoing, that politicians will find her in pages and, and other core folks will find her easier to work with than, than maybe Chris, than, than Jennifer? Do you see that as well, or?
Um, I know it's not right to think that, you know, people think like me, God forbid, um, that happened, but, um, I honestly could work with all three of them and I think that, uh, my God, I almost called her Margaret. Um, I think that Jennifer could make, make that recommendation, that she could have people see both sides of the fence. And I don't, I don't see anything as a detriment where somebody pops into her office and says, hey, I have a question, or boy, am I really ticked off because the blah, blah, blah committee did blah, blah, blah and I don't, I don't like it. But, um, yeah, to me, I didn't get that vibe honestly from any of them of, oh, 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 I kept, as I was seeing them and talking to them, I kept thinking, oh, I can't wait to go talk to her, oh, I can't wait to go talk to her, um, for that. But I, I didn't get that feeling, um, of Jennifer over Kristen of one more standoffish than the other.
Okay.
Before we sort of finish about, on someone, the, the next steps if, once we have a candidate or a ranking of candidates, is we turn this back over to, to Bob and Buzz to sort of do the negotiations and, and the final pieces?
Well, I was, I think.
Do you want us to talk through it?
If, sure, I, I was just going to tell him that I wasn't sure he saw my email about if we, if we feel as though we want to, we can have a short executive session this evening.
Right.
Just to, um, give them parameters to do just that.
Well, and I'm not talking about, I, I'm more just in a process as opposed to the parameters because I foresee a scenario where we might rank candidates where they try to negotiate with one and if that fails, negotiate with the second one.
Well, that's why you don't tell the candidates that, I'm sorry, we did not choose you until after the negotiations are done.
So Scott, if we can, let's, let's walk through a little bit of a process. So you have a proposed motion if you decide to make an offer. That motion will include two things. It'll be a contingent offer of employment, subject to successful, uh, background investigation, which MRI does on, on the top candidate, and successful negotiations between your board and the candidate. So two items, uh, that that contingent offer of employment is based upon. So if you guys vote tonight on a candidate, we will notify the candidate that there's going to be a contingent offer of employment coming with those two caveats to it. You need to go through the background investigation and you need to have successful negotiations with your board. Now in terms of the negotiations, um, we suggest that you conduct those negotiations with the candidate. And to your point, Chris, about what those parameters are, that doesn't have to be decided tonight.
Okay.
Uh, it, it just doesn't. Uh, you've got some time. Our background check generally takes about two weeks, it's pretty extensive. We get releases from the candidate to, so that we can go into financial records and all that kind of stuff. So it takes a good two weeks for us, 10, 10 days to 14 days?
Yeah, I'd, I'd say probably, uh, 10 business days.
So you've got some time to work out a contract and oh, by the way, all three candidates know what your range of salary is, they all know that. Um, so they, and, and we sort of know where they are in their scales, their, their salary scales. So we think you're fine with what you may offer, uh, at this point. That's again, a subject of negotiation between you and the candidate, not us. Uh, so you've got some time to figure that all out.
Okay.
I will say this, and I think it was mentioned here tonight, uh, one of the candidates is interviewing tomorrow night as a finalist.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, in a neighboring community.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's public, that candidate is Jennifer.
Right.
So that's why if you go, if you're going to take a vote tonight, uh, that's why we want to contact the individuals tonight.
Each of them?
Each of them, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't know, how would you like to do this, Scott? Do you want to have, do you want to have an executive session this evening or do you want to wait until, um, we can do this all together, either?
Is, is the, the vote of who we offer, is that has to be in public or is that have to be in private?
Yes, yeah, no, we, we do need to ha, take a vote in public, yes.
Right. Um, and so because it'll take a couple of weeks, uh, we can put on an executive session for next week to actually do the, the other pieces.
Okay.
Because I also don't think our agenda says executive session on it, it's a possibility.
I, I did talk with Bob about that and I also talked with Margaret about it and I have, um, language for, um, if we go into executive session.
I, I have the time and energy to actually, if we want to do it tonight.
Well, if it's quick, I'll do it too. I'm just gonna be tired soon.
I, I. I, I think we're, we, because I believe that by hiring, you always get the candidates you want if you go faster as opposed to slower.
Hmm.
But I think we really do have votes tonight, like, we want to make an offer to. I think because I think we have three great candidates, I would, uh, uh, if that candidate, uh, for some reason decided they didn't like us or had something else come up, then, uh, if we had a vote already of who I back up or even tertiary, it would be, um, uh, we could do that as well so that, um, if in the event we don't get the candidate we, we made ranked as our number one, then it is faster to get us into the candidate we ranked as number two before they also get hired away, and gosh forbid, a third candidate get hired away before we can actually get to that point to do, so.
Well, um, I guess what I would say is that if, you know, if you're going to make the motion for Kristen. Well, I guess what I would say is that if, you know, if you're gonna make the motion for Kristen and that negotiation does not work out, there is a chance that Jennifer may decide she'd rather not take the job that she's interviewing for tomorrow night, or there may be, you know, other circumstances.
How, how, your ranking between one and two, how big is there a gap there? Because I'm hearing from Peggy that she is, again, likes all three of them, but has a strong preference for, for Jennifer. Her gap between Jennifer and Kristen is, is, there is a gap there.
Yeah, I, I, just overall, I guess I felt that, I mean, until I, we interviewed Kristen, Jennifer was my favorite. Let's put it that way. But I really do, I do think that Kristen might be a better fit for employees and might be a better fit for the, the community. If you'd like, I'll make the motion.
Um, I have, I'm chair in sort of the meetings, so let me, I, I will make the motion that we give an offer to Kristen Rubin.
Okay, do, and this is the.
But we'll just, we'll leave it at that.
That's the motion.
Okay, so.
Read the motion, so you have the actual wording, yes.
Okay, yes. I move that the Berlin Select Board make a conditional offer of employment to Kristen Rubin for the position of Berlind Town Administrator. This offer is conditioned upon the satisfactory background review and investigation by MRI and successful negotiations of the terms of appointment by the Select Board.
They'll either make or second the motion based on whoever.
Well.
You just made it.
What's that?
You just kinda made it by reading it.
I, I, I can say that I made it and you can second it if you'd like.
Yep, I will second it then.
Okay.
And so, Peggy, how are you feeling about this? Because I, I'd like to, again, we're three different people with three different opinions on things, but I wanna make sure that two to one is never over someone's sort of strong objections.
No, you know what? I like Jennifer. Obviously she was the first person you talked to, so you gauge the other two candidates off that person. And, you know, the second one comes in, where does she go? Up or down? Third one comes in, where does she go? As, I, I think that Berlin would be in good hands with any of the three ladies before us. You know, if Jennifer is not, you know, not the one who comes to us, I think that Kristen would be open to things that I liked about Jennifer and things that I liked about Courtney as well, you know, to bring to them. There was one, one item about, was it Jennifer? There was one that I really, really liked to comment. I think it was in her letter. And you can help me out since you're sitting here. Of course I can't find it. I mean, you know, Jennifer has the labor relations, the grants, the budget. You know, she's working on her MCPPO. She's got the contract. She's increased citizen engagement. She does the housing. She's, this is what it, she has seen the retirement of key department heads. Let's think about it. We've got two gigantic ones coming up by the end of the year. I think that she could help steer that ship, you know, for us. But, you know, will I be upset if my candidate isn't picked? Yep. Can I live with it? Yep. So we'll leave it at that. Would I prefer it's mine? Yep, but.
Obviously.
It's okay.
To refer to first that it would be, it's the same argument, so. Guys just trying to gauge on that, so, again, I'm, I'm second on the motion.
Okay, so got a motion and a second on the table. We'll call for a vote. Keith, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Stone, no.
Okay.
No, it is, that's in our business for outside of executive.
Yes, so are you, you do wanna do the executive session?
I think there's work to be done.
No, I, I mean, there's nothing other than, you know, talking about, you know, the offer and anything else that, for the candidate. If you wanna wait until next week, that's fine too.
If we can do it tonight, let, let's just plow through, you know, instead of waiting a week.
Yeah, the, the only suggestion we'd make is you don't have, I, I know you have a contract with Margaret, but you don't have the details in front of you?
No, I wasn't gonna, I was just gonna talk.
You're just talking salary.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
So, now that I have to find my thing here. So the board will enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Reason Number Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, our new TA.
And are we coming back?
And we will only adjourn, we will, we'll only be coming back to adjourn. So we need to have a roll call vote. Keith, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Stone, aye.
Okay.